We cannot, the Planning Department cannot, the Board of Supervisors cannot say that the conflict will not exist or that it will not be significant. And that's the CEQA evidence you need. Furthermore, CEQA says that if there is potential for significant cumulative impacts on the environment, including land use and land use planning, then there should be an environmental review. This is what you guys were talking about with 2660 Harrison. Cumulative impact. There is definitely a cumulative impact on land use and most definitely on land use planning. If project after project after project gets approved before a plan even exists, that's a significant impact. Thank you. And we did our homework on CEQA. I really hope the Board did their homework on CEQA. And we can hear your guys' progressive interpretations of what CEQA can be for our communities.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker.
Good evening, Supervisors. My name is Rosario Maya, Executive Director of Mission Language and Vocational School. I am here along with many of our students who were not able to come in, but they are here to support the proposed 3400 Cesar Chavez Development. Even though it was difficult for the students to get here, they are here because they feel strongly about housing issues in the community. The Mission District, as you have heard throughout the evening, needs more housing in place of the empty Kelly Moore site, which has been vacant, as you know, since 2005. This project is not displacing anyone. I am encouraged by the interaction of the developer of Seven Hills properties with the community and expect it to continue throughout the project. This developer has demonstrated time and time again his commitment to work with the community. We support the job creation aspect of this project, both at the construction as well as the retail level. Employment opportunities are and will continue to be coordinated with Mission District community-based organizations. And also that the selection of retail tenants will be done, both with community participation, that promotes community-based economic development. I feel strongly that supporting development in the Mission, as in the case of the Armory Building, can lead to unforeseen and, as you know, very negative outcomes for our community. I urge you Supervisors to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is David Mango. I'm a homeowner in the Mission. And my daughter attends school in the Mission. I'm a first, excuse me, a first-generation American, and my daughter's a first-generation San Franciscan. And we're very proud of that. Every morning, I ride my daughter across the Mission. We go to her school, which is in the Mission, and then I ride across the rest of the Mission. And we see the city and we see the community at all times. Sorry. You're distracting me, darling. I just want to say that I do not want to see what I've seen in other projects in San Francisco in the over decade that I've lived here, where things get stalled and people are arguing back and forth and things drag on for years and years. And then we wind up with a pornography studio that I ride by every single morning with my daughter. It has been developed. It's not been painted. All they've done is changed the lights. It's an eyesore. It's ridiculous. I urge you to reject this appeal and support this project. I have no affiliation with this developer or any of the other developers that are community developers that'll make money off of this. I also don't care whether Walgreens moves in there or my wife will kill me for saying this, Starbucks. I don't like any of them either. But I don't want this lot to sit there as an empty toxic waste site for years while people debate what to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Supervisors. My name is Erica Levin. I live on Shotwell and 25th. My ancestors were also immigrants and worked really hard and lived lots of people in a small space, but we're not here to talk about that. Planning approved this project because it satisfied the requirements. I live and work in the inter-Mission. What goes on in that site and near that site is not beneficial for anybody. It's not healthy. It's not safe. I chose the Mission because it had a lot of vitality and it was very different than other parts of San Francisco. I believe it'll continue to be that way. I think that ample time has been spent discussing and looking and turning around stones about this project and what could be done there otherwise. And I really encourage you to support the building that Seven Hills is asking for. I think it'll be good for all of us as San Franciscans. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker. If you guys could cool out on the hissing and clapping. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Supervisors. My name is David Klopke. I live near the corner of Cesar Chavez and Bryant. I'm here to support the project and ask you to vote against the appeal of the neg-deck. The project makes good use of the property that is unused and, of course, a crime magnet right now. The plan offers to basically split the burden of ownership by offering some subsidized housing and helping people get into ownership rather than rental units. Rent is nothing but 100% interest. We have to start moving away from that economy. There are already more than 200 low-income units in the Cesar Chavez area. I think that, you know, we should start looking at that and see how those can be developed and reused or redeveloped. Rental housing, as I've said, is the core of the Opposition's proposal. And it seems to me that that's a really bad idea. We have to get away from rentals. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Devi. And I've, my husband and I are artists. We've lived in the Mission District for 40 years, and we love it there. We've worked with the Neighborhood Association, Lower 24th Street, to make this a better neighborhood. It's always in need of improvement. The developer has been very kind to invite us to make comments and to improve the project, which we've done for the last year or so with my participation. We feel that he's made some compromises to make it more our neighborhood. We were impressed that the developer's offering financial assistance to local first-time buyers and that 50% of the units are family-sized. They've worked with us to create this neighborhood. One of the aspects I like about it, since I'm an artist, is that they're agreeable to having Proceda Eyes, the mural company, do a beautiful piece on the Cesar Chavez side. This is a great contribution in an area that loves murals. They've included a community center on the ground level. That's the Mission Education Project for young children, getting tutorial help. It'll also be used for other community gathering events. It's important that they have parking for each of the units so there's no spillover into the limited current street parking. There's no disturbance, and I like that very much. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
My name is Kristen Sullivan. I'm a born and raised San Franciscan, and I live on 26th Street, around the corner from where this is hoping to be built. And the project has actually fulfilled all the requirements requested of them. So I am 100% in favor of this project making my neighborhood a little more safer.
Good evening. My name is John Sullivan. I'm in favor of this project. I've been a property owner for over 20 years around the corner on 26th Street. So I've seen all the changes going on here. I can tell you the amount of crime that goes on at night on this corner, on this empty lot. It's been ridiculous for years. The other thing I've noticed, too, is during the days, between the hours of seven and five over the years, when it's been at Kelly Moore, I can tell you the amount of traffic that's been in and out of there. And after seeing these drawings, there's no way the traffic for this new project will be anywhere even close to what they had over the years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Good evening, Supervisors. I live about 200 feet from this actual location, so I think my comments might be relevant to this. Give you an update. As of about two hours ago, I saw two drug transactions right there and a gun. So we, I urge you to support this project, to get rid of this empty, empty lot and this flagrant that's happening in the area. I think the developer's done a great job to interact with the community and to engage a dialogue, which is really positive for the local environment. So I support this, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Blair Moser. I'm a 35-year resident of the Mission. My children were both born in the Mission, and they work for public-interest nonprofit agencies. And without projects like Seven Hills, they have little hope of ever owning a home in the neighborhood where they grew up. It would be perfect if we could magically turn the clock back to a time when rents were low and houses were cheap. But wishing won't make it so, and the perfect must not be the enemy of the good. The Seven Hills project with onsite daycare, after-school tutoring, access to public transportation, commercial space, and a good percentage of below-market units is very, very good. It will provide safe, supportive homes for diverse families, singles, and couples. I hope it will be approved and completed as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Laura Gladstein. I've lived at 3717 Cesar Chavez since 1995. I'm supporting this project. I've been impressed by Mr. Roca as well as the developers from the start. I've worked for Gerson Baker, who owns a number of properties throughout the Bay and throughout primarily residential properties throughout California. And I've also worked for Bridge Housing. And I've been very impressed for someone who I'm not going to benefit from and who I've never can even afford to own one of these places, but just impressed by the amount of work he went through in the last two years to work with the community and to get on board with what the neighbors wanted. Again and again, his designs changed. And again and again, he bent over as far backwards as he financially possibly could to make it possible for people to have what they wanted. I ask you and I urge you to not appeal this, but support it. It's a tragedy the way it is at this moment. And it would be nice to have long-term residents on Cesar Chavez. When I moved in in 1995, there were four low-income, or three low-income housing projects on the street. We now have four. I love them. They're great people. It's all a great energy in terms of the neighborhood. But we need to have other people included as well. And for someone who's gone for such a great deal of strength in their own character and money with very little to improve it by, I was impressed. So I support it, and I hope you will, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name's Jeremy Burnett. I live two blocks away from the project site. I live on 25th Street between Mission and Valencia, and I have for about 24 years. I walk by the site daily, or my wife does, carrying our almost-two-year-old son to daycare, which is on Mission on the other side of Chavez. And of course, I think everyone's aware that this site is a real problem. My sympathies go out to the people who have spoken against this project because I feel, I share their same goals, I guess I would like to say. But I think that this project can achieve some of the solutions by offering what I think will be relatively affordable homeownership to what could be a relatively diverse group of homebuyers. So I cannot comment on the technical aspects of CEQA, but I am for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Supervisors. My daughter also wants to speak on CEQA. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Andrew Dunbar, and I live on this block, this Kelly Moore site block, adjacent to this project. And despite my efforts, I have personally sadly watched the decline of it over the past two years. CEQA does not study the impacts of no or delayed development. The environmental impacts of this project were completely and diligently investigated and reported. This appeal is not grounded, I believe, in legislative motives. This appeal is an attempt to swap out a legitimate and proactively positive developer that is trying to make a very good project, one for our neighborhood, my neighborhood. I have reviewed the Eastern Neighborhood Plan, and this project is not in conflict with any plan development on this lot. The below-market-rate overlay housing, as you know, does not include this site. Therefore, contrary to the appellant's claim, there is no reason to appeal the negative declaration yet again. I have two small children and a business on 26th Street. I am personally invested in my neighborhood. My wife and I started the Fixed 26 Neighborhood Coalition five years ago to make the street a better place. And since that time, we've worked with neighbors on 26th Street to get traffic calming and planted over 100 trees with Fuff in the Mission. I've recently applied for and received a substantial grant from the Mayor's Office to try to get green paving on ours through the Parks Trust. As an active member of this community, I support this project, and I want you to as well. It provides diversity of homeownership opportunities. Let me be clear. MAC and MATA do not speak for me. I speak for me. They say they speak for a community, and that may be true. But the Mission is made up of many communities, not just one they lobby for. San Francisco is made up of many neighborhoods. This is my neighborhood. No building, not building this project means no nine-below-market-family-rate-units and 50 other homes that carpenters, police officers, and teachers like myself could buy. They will not be built. And who speaks for this displacement? We need diversity. We need mixed-use. We need a community-based project. And we shall have them with this project, unless it is misrepresented and distorted by a well-organized, publicly-funded bodies who do not speak for all but claim to.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Good evening, Supervisors. My name is Zoe Astrocann. I live on 26th Street, on the block where this project is being proposed. I am here to speak in support of the project and ask you to reject the appeal. I want to point out that the legislative process here is being abused, it would seem. I would also like to ask each of you to imagine for a moment that you live on this block, as I do, with two young children, a one-year-old and a three-year-old, and that a responsible and responsive developer has come along to propose a project here that meets and seems to exceed as well all of the current legislation. It is extremely frustrating to see the city legislative and review process seemingly being abused. Seven Hills is proposing to construct 60 much-needed homes on this site and as well is making space for street-level active businesses and a community-serving space. I cannot see any compelling or legal reason why this project should not go forward. I believe that the Planning Department agrees on this, and I hope that you will agree as well. The likely alternative to this project is that the site will remain vacant for an extended period and continue to be a magnet for public drinking, urinating, and drug dealing, which we've seen evidence of repeatedly. This is not a good thing for a community, for any of the people that live in that community or for the city of San Francisco. Not allowing this project to move forward is a definite negative impact to our neighborhood. Please seriously consider this and deny the appeal of the negative declaration. Thank you very much.
My name is Fran Taylor, and I'm an active member of several pedestrian safety, bicycle, transportation justice organizations. But I'm speaking as an individual, someone who's lived in the Mission and Bernal Heights for over 30 years and has worked to try to calm traffic on Cesar Chavez since about 1997. And I'm encouraged that the discussion of traffic calming has been central to this project. But I'm a little worried that things that are nice ideas are actually window dressing and that some of the sentiments expressed in support of high-density housing on transit corridors could just be lip service. This is a corner that is within blocks of seven muni lines, a BART station, SAM Trans runs down South Van Ness. Yet it has one-to-one parking. It has parking for Walgreens workers and customers. If you look up and down the street from all four directions, you'll see small restaurants, fruit stands, travel agents. There's a jazz bar. There's a pie store. All of these little shops have no parking. People walk there. People get off the muni. They go in there. They don't drive in and out, across the sidewalk, endangering the pedestrians every time they go in and out. This is one of the 10 most dangerous intersections in the city. And I see this encouragement to drive by having almost 100 parking spaces as a negative impact. So I hope that you do not support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Thank you, Supervisors, for listening to everybody here. My name is TJ Walkup. I'm a cartoonist. I live in the Mission area. My family's been in San Francisco prior to 1906 earthquake. We've been working class and upper class and middle class all around. I could say that right now, anyone who's going to hiss behind me, it's pretty a poor tactic if you're going to do that. But I'm in support of this project. I think it's a good project for the Mission. I think it's a good revitalization project for the Mission. I do agree there should be more affordable housing in it. I think that we can talk to the developer about that, and maybe he'll find a little more space for that. I also think that this would bring money into the neighborhood. If I have a dollar in my wallet and I come into a neighborhood and I've got this dollar and I'm willing to spend it, and I leave it right here, it goes into the community and it stays there. So if there's affordable housing, plus housing that people can pay for that's expensive, it's a benefit to the developer, a benefit to the city, a benefit to the people who have businesses that are small in that neighborhood. I'm not in favor of Walgreens, but it's not my decision, right? I'm leaving this dollar here for you to think about.
No, don't leave the cash.
Well, if you know what, if you know what a dollar's worth, you'll take it. So I think right now, the people, the working-class people, could agree with me. They know what a dollar's worth. So the first person who does it has the humility to admit that they understand that this is part of revitalizing the neighborhood. So I'm in support of the project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please, and you can pick up the dollar.
My name is Inez Rosarte. Vivo en el Distrito de la Misión y soy miembro de la Colectiva de Mujeres.
My name is Inez Rosarte. I live in the Mission District, and I'm part of the Women's Collective, part of the day labor program.
En el Distrito de la Misión no queremos apartamentos lujosos. No queremos más Walgreens. Queremos apartamentos accesibles para familias trabajadoras. Queremos tiendas para pequeños negocios. Queremos un hogar para nuestros niños. Queremos una planta para aquellos que buscan trabajo en las calles con frío y hambre. Ustedes no saben lo que es eso, no tener un hogar. Estamos...
In the Mission District, we do not want condos or Walgreens. We want apartments that are accessible for working families. We want stores for small businesses, home for our children, space for those who look for work on the streets and with cold and hunger. And you have no idea what it's like to live without a home.
Estamos en este país trabajando, aportando día a día. Para dar, por lo tanto, exigimos viviendas accesibles al alcance de nuestros bolsillos. Esperamos que se nos haga justicia esta petición. Aunque dicen que la justicia es para los ricos. Y comprobaremos si eso es cierto o no es cierto. Como acaba de suceder, que quieren comprar a la justicia con dinero acá. Ustedes lo han visto, señores. Gracias.
We are here in this country working. We're giving back to the community day to day. Therefore, we demand accessible housing at our reach. We are hoping that justice will be made with this petition. Although they say that justice is for the rich, we will prove this to be true or not. But like this gentleman over here has proven us, we shall see with this type of example.
Gracias. Next speaker, please. Oh, go ahead.
Thank you. Very briefly, because I know you've probably heard a lot of what has already been said repeatedly on the Opposition's side, I do want to speak to, however, the environmental impact that perhaps has not been spoken too much about concerning Walgreens. Walgreens, the corporation itself, there's already four in a mile radius. The type of contamination and production that Walgreens does from the shipment from where those products are being made all the way to Walgreens, to the store, to the product at the store, to the shelf. All of that is contamination. All of that is not being considered in the type of environmental impact that will continue to happen if we have another Walgreens in this area. Now, to say that there is going to be an empty lot there for a very long time, and there's going to be lots of flight and selling of drugs and maybe some violence, this and this, we do not want that either. What we want is to have community services to be able to address the problems of alcoholism, yes, of drug addiction, yes, that exist within our communities. And because of this huge slash that are already being given to the services in our communities in all of San Francisco, we are going to need more community centers that are going to be addressing these very serious issues. And there are going to be tutoring centers. There are going to be day labor centers. There are going, I mean, childcare centers as well in the type of proposals that we are putting forth. So please take this very seriously. We want to have a very positive impact in our community. We believe that this other proposal is very possible and being able to help out hugely in our community. Thank you.
Good evening, Supervisors. Thanks for the opportunity to address you tonight. My name is Larry Del Carlo. I'm the president of the Mission Housing Development Corporation. One point I'd like to make is that the Seven Hills development will have a positive impact on the community. It will replace the fenced-off vacant lot and bring more life into the area. The new housing will increase healthy pedestrian traffic activity along the corridor. This development will make the intersection safer and more pleasant with traffic calming measures and new trees. The Seven Hills development will have an overall positive impact on the Mission. One other point I'd like to make is that Mission Housing has been developing affordable housing for over 35 years, and we have close to 2,000 affordable housing units that we own and manage. The most recent development, the Valencia Gardens rebuild, 260 units of affordable housing with also senior and disabled housing. The point I want to make is when we build affordable housing and low-income families and individuals move into that housing, they don't stay low-income. Many, many times, they do not stay low-income. As they begin to make more income and they don't any longer qualify for these low-income units, they have to move out and find another place to live. And many times, these families that live in our buildings have to, they want to buy a home. And where do they buy a home? Well, probably Richmond, Vallejo, or other places, Hercules, and so on. There are no homeownership or very few homeownership opportunities available for them in San Francisco. This development provides units that are below-market and also the lower end of the market-rate units. These are not the luxury condominiums that you're finding in the high-rise condominium developments in the south of Market and on Embarcadero. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
And I recommend that you deny the appeal.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Supervisors. My name is Tom Christian.
I live at the border of Glen Park and the Mission, and I volunteer my time in the Mission District. I am a recent board member of the Haight-Ashbury Free Clinic, which just moved to 13th admission. I quite frankly don't understand why MAC is here. Nobody is being displaced, no businesses, no households. The only thing being displaced is a billboard from the property. And I thought MAC was for anti-displacement. Nothing is being displaced. They talk about this being a, market rate being a bad development. Market rate is set by the buyers, not by the developer. The property is worth what a buyer will pay. And if a buyer wants to move into this property that's replacing a crime-ridden lot and be next to other crime-ridden areas, then that buyer is going to pay what that buyer is willing to pay. The price is not set by the developer. I support this project 100%, and I ask that you support this project 100% as well.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
My name is Cynthia Mesa. I'm a 4th grade elementary school teacher at Leonard R. Flynn Elementary. I work four blocks away from the Calimore site. I represent not only myself as a teacher, but the many families that I serve every day. It never fails, every single year, we have families that leave. And every single time I ask them, "Why are you leaving us?" I also teach 5th grade, so a lot of times these families have been here from kinder through 4th grade. "Why are you leaving us when they're in 5th grade, they're about to go on to middle school?" And the answer is always the same. "We can't afford to live here." But they're not alone in that. I can't afford to live in what the Seven Hills Development Corporation is proposing. I work really hard. I give endless hours to my community. I have three children. I have a seven-year-old, a three-year-old, and a 19-month-old. And it's just not right. And I ask of you, please, to consider the alternative proposal, that we have affordable housing for all members of our community, working class, our working professionals, for those that serve food or work in the classroom. Please, 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 think of us, not in the short term, but in the long term. We need a home as well.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Muy buenas noches, respetable público, damas y caballeros. Estoy muy feliz escuchar en diferentes opiniones, en diferentes razas. En este momento, me da gusto de decirle a todos ustedes que están presentes. Este es un plan de trabajo. Entonces, he escuchado a base de crímenes, pero eso es problema de las autoridades. He escuchado de muertes, he escuchado de robos, pero eso es un plan, es problema de autoridades. Este se trata de desarrollo del pueblo para las viviendas. Y me da gusto que todos los que se hagan y que se haga un voto para todo de San Francisco, a todos los residentes de San Francisco. Y con ustedes, yo soy miembro de un sindicalista y trabajo también en la César Chávez. Y me da gusto, da le gusta a ustedes que todas las opiniones que he escuchado, que este no causa divisiones. Nosotros tenemos un mismo color ante Dios, todopoderoso. Espero que comprendan todas esas cosas de opiniones, porque somos todos de mismo color de sangre ante Dios. Es mi opinión de ustedes. Gracias, hermanos. Gracias.
Gracias. All right.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm happy to hear different opinions from different races. I'm also happy to tell you that this is a work plan. This is a work plan, that this is, you know, based on what we've heard, like people have been talking about crimes, about deaths, about robberies. This is a problem for the authorities. But what we're talking about here is about development of housing for the community. We want to vote for all people in San Francisco. We want to vote to benefit San Francisco. I'm a member of the union as well as, and I work at César Chávez as well. And it's good to see all the opinions and all the people that are here, but just remember that we're all the same color in front of God. And it's good to understand everybody's opinions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Gloria Esteva. Y bueno, aquí hemos escuchado muchas cosas, ¿verdad? La principal que yo escuché, y ya no voy a decir mucho, es que las cosas se analizaron de manera muy general, y que no se tomó en cuenta la comunidad. Y no hablo de la comunidad que puede pagar estas casas, algunas con más dinero, ¿verdad? Hablo de la comunidad trabajadora. En esa zona, principalmente, está un grupo de gente que, como ya se dijo, se levanta muy temprano, trabaja duro, mantiene las casas de mucha gente que tiene más dinero, y no se está tomando en cuenta esas personas.
Good afternoon. My name is Gloria Esteva. I've heard a lot of things tonight. I have one main point. I won't take up a lot of time. The analysis that I've heard so far is that people have talked about community, but in a very general term. The community that I want to talk about is a community, I don't want to talk about the community that can pay to buy a house. I want to talk about the working-class community. It has been said that in that zone, in that area, there's a group of people that wake up really early to go do services for those that are very rich. They maintain their household, they do a lot of different services for them.
Se habla del impacto ambiental. Yo creo que mientras más negocios haya en una zona, más atrae gente, más carros, más afluencia. Entonces, ¿en qué cabeza cabe que no va a haber ahí un problema ambiental?
Around the environmental impact, when you have businesses, there's more people that are going to be, there's more traffic of people that are going to be flowing through there, there's going to be more affluence. So if there's going to be more people, more cars, more traffic in general, how is it that people don't comprehend that it's not going to cause an environmental impact?
Ahora aquí se dice que si trabajas duro, puedes comprarte una casa. Las estadísticas no dicen eso. Nosotros hemos trabajado duro. Hemos tenido que estar trabajando desde las 5:00 de la mañana hasta las 8, 9:00 de la noche, y corridito, no descansamos. Sin embargo, no tenemos la oportunidad de tener, por lo menos, tranquilamente el dinero para rentar una casa.
People here say that if you work hard, you can buy yourself a house. But the statistics don't really prove that. We have worked very hard. We have, we work from 5:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. non-stop, without resting. And you know what? There's still no opportunity for us to even safely or comfortably be able to pay our rent.
Ahora, ¿por qué tenemos que ser los más pobres, los que vayamos a ser desplazados? ¿Por qué si las personas tienen dinero para comprar una casa, tienen dinero para tener un auto, por qué no se van más lejitos para que los que no tenemos podamos desplazarnos a nuestro trabajo, a seguir produciendo la riqueza?
So if those that are, why, why are poor people the ones that always have to be displaced? Why is it that those that have money, that have cars, why, why, if they want a house so bad, why is it that they can't go somewhere else? Why is it that they don't let the poor people stay where it is that they stay and actually go and work and do the services that they provide to continue to produce for the rich and for the wealthy?
No se trata de que veamos las cosas tan superficialmente. Se trata de que ya no seamos tan egoístas. Tenemos dinero en nuestro trabajo, ganamos. A veces, esas personas que dijeron aquí, que con esa construcción de edificio se va a quitar la delincuencia, no se quita, porque ese es otro problema.
It's not about superficial, talking superficially. It's also not about being, it's about being selfish, about not being selfish. Those people that are saying that if we do build these condos, that there's going to be no more violence, there's going to be no more delinquency, that's a whole other issue. And the building will not get rid of that problem.
Thank you. Your time is...
No sean tan cómodos y tan gratos.
I'm sorry, the time has ended and we have to go to the next speaker. Thank you.
Don't be so comfortable or ingrate. We have to continue to work.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
So I have to address this because I've been hearing so many things that just really have me very enraged. I have to say that the only way to deal with migrants and to deal with poor people of color is to overall stop the predator and imperialist policies that the United States government is involved with in Central America, all of Latin America, Asia, Africa, okay? So if you don't want poor people, so if you don't want poor people of color to live here, then go talk to the U.S. government. In the meantime, we are here. And you need to stop scapegoating those people that are directly affected by those white supremacist imperialist treaties and policies that the United States government is imposing on our countries, which forces migration here, okay? So I'm sure that a lot of people in our community and that the Mission community, that are poor people of color, would love to own a house. Some might even think, like, "Why am I spending so much damn money on rent?" But you know, the reality is that people cannot afford it. That's just it. And I don't know how, like, or how that cannot fit into people's heads, right? That people cannot afford it. My family had to leave San Francisco because eight to 10 years ago, they couldn't afford it, right? They couldn't no longer afford to even think about purchasing a house. I would just like to say that I do not want that area to become another Valencia Street. And I would like to ask for all of you to support 100% affordable housing all the time. Any opportunity that you have to support 100% affordable housing, please support it. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Well said. Good evening, supervisors. My name is Luis Herrera. I live on 3281 22nd Street, near Valencia. And we're like one of the last units on that block that's under market rate in that area. Recently, a landlord has sent us a rent increase, or if we don't pay that rent increase, they'll kick us out. But what our landlord is doing is something illegal because no, our people in the house have been living there for more than 15 years, and they have no right to increase our rent. So I just want to say that that's something the landlords and developers use illegal tactics to evict low-income housing people, to evict seniors, to kick out, like, to take out the last low-income housing in San Francisco. So my unit is going to fight this. We're also going to fight alongside the people who have come to support for low-income housing to be built more in San Francisco. I also work for, I also work in the Mission District and with, has a monitor for the shelters in the Mission, the only shelters in the Mission. And the word that I get from the guys who I interact every day is that they need a day labor center. They need a bigger day labor center than the one they have, because they need more jobs, they need more stability, they need more opportunities to be able to work and live here. So I please urge you to support the MAC efforts, the alternative project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello. My name is Luis Armiento. I'm currently interning with the Day Labor Program. And I just would like to share with all of you my opposition to the Seven Hills Project and would like to invite you all to do the same. I think the bottom line is that we are talking about a process of displacement in the Mission, just as in so many other neighborhoods. A lot of people who are in support of the Seven Hills Project have said that they're not displacing anything. But I think if you go to the Mission and you talk to community members, or at least all the people that I've spoken to, have talked about a very, very real process of displacement. And even today, so many people from housing rights organizations and tenants have come out and spoken about this process and spoken about the evictions and spoken about this process of displacement. Also, one of the communities that I think has really taken a lot of the brunt of this process, or will possibly take a lot of the brunt, is the day labor community. A lot has also been said about the problem of drugs and violence right there, near the area of the project. And I think if any community is affected by this violence and these drugs, it's the day labor community. These are the people who are actually suffering the brunt and the actual violence and the infection of drugs in their daily lives. And that's why the day labor community has come out today against the Seven and represented that concern of theirs. And also, so this general process of displacement, that's what this is about. And for those of you who aren't listening to the questions of this general process, and for those of you who aren't listening to ideas about an alternative project, I invite you to open your minds and really create the possibility for real change. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, supervisors. My name is Eric Meyer. I'm an administrator for Universal School, located here in San Francisco. I'm concerned because I know that affordable housing is very important. I personally know people that are workers, that put in over 60-hour weeks, and they still report that they are not able to get ahead financially. I believe that affordable housing is critical and that it would be very appropriate for the city to consider helping put forth the nonprofit organizations instead of corporations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Adam Dalva. I'm a 21-year-old college student. And I didn't come here today expecting to be up here, as you can tell from my attire. But with time, listening to the impassioned pleas of these residents of the district, I became proud to wear this bandana and come here and implore you to deny the plea, the claim of the Seven Hills District and this Walgreens. As I said, I wasn't planning to speak, but you know, the tears, the crying that was taking place both in this room and downstairs and with the people watching in the lobby, made me think of how important this is and how important this is to a group of people who need to be able to live in their own community where they have these ties. But although these pleas are important, the key issue here today is CEQA. And from my understanding of the CEQA Act, not only is CEQA about traffic or birds or anything like that, it's also about a communative environmental impact, which is a much broader term. And I think as we heard in Council's remarks a few hours ago, his own statement was mainly about these greater problems of community. This shows that this is not just a shot in the dark that these impassioned people are making here today, it's an appropriate point to be discussing. I think that was also reflected in the questions that we heard at the beginning of this speech. So what have we heard? We've heard that these people need a place to stay with affordable housing for everyone, not just eight units out of an 80-unit building. That's a ridiculous thing to suggest. And finally, let me say with my last 30 seconds, that another environmental impact that we have to address is young people such as myself, I'm going to be a teacher in less than a year, I'm certified, who would like to move here and help the community at large. Young people like myself who want to pitch in also need housing like this. We won't be able to afford $600,000 condos. I don't think most people in here would be able to afford such a thing. If you're talking about benefiting San Francisco in the future as well, you're going to need places for people to live, like me, like many people who have stage fright and weren't able to talk today, but who would love to otherwise, who really care about this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, supervisors. My name is Fred Snyder, longtime resident, business owner, property owner in the Mission, lived at several locations. I support this project because it is going to create affordable housing. And one thing that I have noticed is there isn't a lot of affordable housing being built in the neighborhood. This project will build affordable housing. Longtime supporter, both with Mission Housing and Citizens Housing, among the advisory committees. I think we have an inherent problem, though, and it's been this zoning process we've been going through for seven years. This has taken far too long, and I don't believe it's all the Planning Commission and Planning Department's doing. I have noticed that quite a few people in the Planning Department often refer to the supervisors as being in control of this. This is taking too long. It is affecting our neighborhoods profusely. We need to work together and come together as a community to solve these problems. The other thing that's been very bad in this process is we have not developed dialogue between groups that don't get along. I think this has been a travesty in the process. When you sit in a back room and put a plan together and you don't involve the entire community, it's a big problem. And then the link to time this is taking, it's ridiculous. I do support this project because it is going to create some housing now which the city needs. If there's a real alternative to this, I haven't heard it, I don't see it in the works. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Supervisors who are remaining, good evening. Philip Lesser conceived about four blocks away from the project site. Lesser's class, who's been in the Mission since 1936, also here today representing Mission Miracle Mile, which is the business improvement district in the Mission District. Want to commend the Planning Department for basically putting this through a very rigorous test, and of course, it passed that test. And we're hoping that you supervisors will do your duty, just like the Planning Department and just as the city attorney did, and follow the law. This is a CEQA matter, and there's not too much that I can add to that, other than San Francisco is, and nobody, I think, has mentioned this this evening, a transit-first city. This project is three blocks away from 24th and Mission BART Station. It's in a district that has 10 muni lines. And if you want to get people out of cars, and I can tell you this is a long-term merchant, give them parking. And that's what you're going to get in this. You're going to get about two dozen on-street parking that's not going to take up any of the existing parking, it's going to be completely additive, that's just going to be for customers. That's absolute gold anywhere in San Francisco, especially in the Mission District. And then on top of that, there's going to be some 70 parking stalls for the residents and for the workers in the retail establishments. This is an unbelievable gold mine. This is, this is something that's going to take cars off the streets, going to get people in our public transportation. And just as a reasonable person, you have to recognize César Chávez has six lanes, Mission Street has four lanes. A development of this size is not going to even be noticeable put in that context. So thank you very much in advance for your positive vote in rejecting this appeal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, supervisors. My name's Kim Malcheski. I'm an attorney. I live and work in the Mission, and I actually wanted to talk about CEQA. I've actually read CEQA and the guidelines in several First District Court of Opinions interpreting CEQA. I don't know if the supervisors have, but the Court of Appeal has clearly said that the San Francisco Planning Department has to consider two factors. One, you have to consider the cumulative impact of all of the relevant projects, not just under construction, but ones that are reasonably planned for the future. And the Planning Department has never done that. Also, you have to consider the social, economic... Also, you have to consider the social economic effects. Because the social economics effects have effects obviously on the environment. CEQA says you have to look at land, air, and noise. Increased traffic obviously affects land, air, and noise. And that's what the Planning Department has never seriously considered. Planning Department has never seriously applied Prop M, which the Planning Department has to do under subdivision E. Subdivision E requires the Planning Department to apply the eight criteria of Prop M to environmental reports. And that's a fundamental problem, the Planning Department is a rubber stamp for developers in San Francisco. And I think you have to ask yourselves, the Planning Department came out on June 30th with a 500-page, a 500-page draft environmental report. Yet, the Planning Commission voted on this project on April 19. Does anybody here see a problem with that chronology? When did the Planning Department issue its report on Cesar Chavez? January, February, six months before the environmental report on the eastern neighborhoods was done? Does anybody see a problem with that? That the Planning Department is approving luxury condos all over the Mission without a complete Mission plan, without a complete environmental impact statement? I would encourage you to read the housing section of the draft environment report. The report says 98% of the people in the Mission cannot afford to buy--
Thank you for your testimony.
--a house, a median-priced house. $700,000, it's right there, black and white.
I've got to ask you to finish. Sir, your time is up. Sir, your time is up. You're going to be escorted out if you don't stop your testimony. You now are going to be escorted out. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Espinalda Jackson, and I live in Baby Hunters Point. I wasn't going to speak, but I saw players like I see coming from my community. People are given the wrong information. When I hear people saying that they are going to be moved, have you been to Mission and Cesar Chavez, where it used to be a, I used to shop there, Montgomery Wards? They got homes there now. That entire area around there, it used to be the unemployment office. It used to be parking area. You know, it bothers me when I see a handprint that I really don't like seeing here, when the city planning has passed on it, and here we come. You know, this politicking got to stop, this backdoor meeting got to stop, and do the right thing, because you know why you're here.
My name is Judy West. I've lived and worked in the Mission for the last 20 years. I've been involved in these land use debates continuously. I hope everyone in this room understands that the price of housing in San Francisco has everything to do with the year, four to six years it takes to get a project approved here. Art Evans testified a couple of weeks ago that it costs him about $200,000 extra per unit for these extended hearings and the process that is apparently because we do not have laws that apply in this town for real estate development. In the last 20 years, the only consensus I can recall from this diverse community in the Mission has been their demand for more homeownership opportunities for local families. With 80% of the Mission population being renters, this neighborhood has too many absentee landlords that neglect their properties, and we all suffer the environmental impacts of this. I'd like to see this body consider the cumulative impacts of not building housing, of the moratorium we've had on housing in the Mission for nearly 10 years now. In 1999, you imposed the ban, the initial ban on live work, and we have seen almost no housing here since. The couple of projects that squeaked through had just horrendous appeals associated with them. It is embarrassing. I am also a registered environmental assessor, and I do have an understanding of the goals of the environmental protection laws, which are under question in this case. You are on the verge of a very slippery slope here today if you allow partisan politics to override what little we have in the way of environmental protection laws for our physical environment here. I'd like you to consider the environmental impacts on the Mission, leaving countless blighted properties.
Thank you for your testimony.
There are a dozen within stone's throw of my home.
You have to finish. Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening supervisors. I think some of us think it's afternoon, but I just looked at the clock and it's 9:00 PM. You're certainly to be commended. I don't know why anyone wants your job, not the way this goes. I am Luisa Esquero, and I have been a schoolteacher, and probably everyone in the Mission has gone through my classroom at some point. I also have been very active in the issues that affect the Mission, and that's housing and education and health, and name it, it's out there. I do support this project, and I am one of those people that actually was able to meet with the developer, as many of us did, and we worked, you know, some things out. So for many of us, we consider it our community project. This isn't a developer out there on his own making plans and trying to do whatever it is that's going to bring money into his coffers. It is a person who saw an opportunity to bring some housing into a neighborhood that definitely can use it, and sat down and worked with the people of the community, neighbors and surrounding community, and we spent a lot of time doing that. The issues that came up today are interesting. There isn't anyone in this room who isn't against, you know, bad housing, who isn't against poverty. I'm sure we all want to stop the war. But that's not what this meeting is about. It is about 3400 Cesar Chavez, some of us go back to still calling it Army Street. So what does that mean? It means here's an opportunity to put some housing together that gives people a chance at homeownership. Now, what does a community do about the fact that some people can't afford it? Well, guess what? Some of the people who can't afford it today can afford it later. I don't know too many, and I will speak specifically to my own people, Latinos don't come here to work just to sit back and do nothing. We work and we improve our status and we move on as best we can. That's what this is about.
Thank you for your testimony.
Give some people a chance.
Thank you for your testimony. Next speaker, please.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Bayardo Argüello. Hace muchos años vivo en este país con mi familia, mi señora y cinco hijos, uno de diez a dos años.
This is Mr. Argüello. He has been here for many years, and he has with his family of five children. He was always told that it would be very difficult to ever get a house with his five children, and that's what he wanted to do. He would take the bus up to the, you know, what we call the top of the hill, and he did this every single day because he wanted to, of course, economize, save. He says his wife worked at home ironing clothes for other people, and every, you know, what, that's the amount of it. Every week she would deposit a dollar, 25 cents in the bank for what was then called the Christmas Club. So all this time, he was economizing, working hard. It took him 11 years, but he did finally buy his home. He says, why is it that as Latinos, we work, we economize, we work very hard, we don't run around crying and, you know, complaining, but we work hard and we move forward. He says it would be very nice for Latinos to be able to buy the plan that is happening right there on, well, Mission and Cesar Chavez, right? It would be very nice for him to be able to buy those. He says, you buy a house, but you can pay for 20 or more years, no, it's the mortgage. He says that's like still renting a house, basically. Thank you, and let's keep going with the progress. This is still part of the progress, and thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening supervisors. My name is Jose Muniz. I'm a member of Local 22, a member of the Northwest Borno Alliance, and member of the Puerto Rican Social Club here in San Francisco. Everybody I've talked to that in our area approves a project, even the merchants, they think that the biggest thing that they have, the problem that they have, you talk to the businesses in our area of the Mission, is when you talk to them, they say they have no parking. The moment you can't get parking, there's no business. This project provides the parking, not only for the businesses there, but also for the business in the surrounding area. Also, the CEQA is supposed to be on the physical impact of the environment. It shouldn't affect the social, it shouldn't affect the economic, but it does unfortunately. And I think this project does all of it. It provides the jobs, it provides the physical impact with street calming, trees, planting of the medium, it provides safety of the sidewalk. Regarding the social impact, people complain about the Walgreens. Whenever you have street traffic, you have business. If Walgreens provides the street traffic for the other merchants, they will get the business. The other businesses won't carry everything Walgreens has, and Walgreens will not carry everything the other businesses have. So I'm for the project and against the appeal.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening supervisors. My name is Eric Argüello, and I'm an immigrant and a 45-year resident of the Mission District. I'm also the president of the Lower 24th Street Merchant and Neighborhood Coalition, which consists of 135 small businesses on 24th Street and Selmon Mission. We also represent over 350 residents in the 24th Street neighborhood and are in full support of 3400 Project. We have handed in our petitions and cards prior to this hearing. The Asian Mission Business Association, representing 80 merchants, are also supporting the project, and I do have that endorsement card here also. After talking with merchants and completing a small survey of the area, the products and services of merchants in the area are not products or services that Walgreens has or sells. Types of merchants in the area, car dealerships, check cashing services, print shop, coffee shop, tattoo shop, cleaners, produce store, restaurants, employment center, liquor stores, which Walgreens does not sell, karate school, bars, and a dress shop, and many more. Walgreens at 24th and Petro has increased foot traffic for the small merchants in the area, increasing business. In the last five years, there has been 27 new merchants on 24th Street, which 10 are two blocks away from Walgreens, 18 are Latino merchants, five are Middle Eastern and Asian, and four are Caucasian. Walgreens is also a great community partner, paying for over 80% of the San Francisco Special Patrol to subsidize for the smaller merchants. These have all been positive impacts on our community. Please vote against the appeal. And on a personal basis, as a Latino, I know that we can buy, we're smart, we're hardworking, we're flexible, and I think the message that needs to be sent out to our community, to our youth, that we can do it, not that we can't, not that we're not wanted here, not that we're going to be thrown out, we can do it. My parents stood here with a third-grade education as immigrants from Central America with no English, they can do it also. If we want to stay in this community, we need to invest in it, we need to buy in it. Please give us those opportunities for Latinos to stay here in the community and not to be funneled through low-income housing to stay there for decades. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Board President and Supervisors. As one of your constituents and supporters, I ask that you vote against the appeal of the mitigated negative declaration for the proposed mixed-use project at 3400 Cesar Chavez. I ask that you oppose this appeal of this project for the following reasons. The negative declaration considered all of the issues raised by the appeal and concluded that they are primarily social and economic concerns, and that they would not have a significant adverse effect on the physical environment. The project would also provide housing for middle-class families and also for below-market-rate housing for low-income families. The developer of this project has worked hard to address all of the concerns that have been raised about this project. I support the efforts to build housing throughout the city and county of San Francisco. However, I am equally committed to seeing housing needs for all families and hope that they can be met. The opponents of this project seem to think that it is an either-or situation. I believe it is not. This project is a step in the right direction for our housing needs. Please allow it to become a reality by voting against the negative declaration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is John Wilson. I'm the president of the East Mission--
If you could pull the mic a little closer to you, so we can hear you. Can you pull the mic a little closer? Thank you.
You may not want to hear this. My organization is well-informed on the project and strongly supports the project. Would very much like to see it move forward, and I can speak from personal experience that the Walgreens will reduce some traffic from the local people who will find a place where they can pick up things within a short walk of their house. I'd like to strongly urge you to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening supervisors. My name is Andrea Claiborne. I live in the, I'm a resident of the Mission. I live on Guerrero Street, just four blocks from the proposed development site. I am 100% in favor of exactly this kind of housing being constructed in our area. This is an enormous opportunity for our neighborhood to have significant increase in densely-built, mixed-income housing. Those of us who actually live in the immediate area would like to see this project built as soon as possible. We feel this is an opportunity to make our neighborhood more livable, family-friendly. These new residences, a mix of affordable and market-rate apartments, will make our neighborhood safer by putting more eyes and feet on the street and bringing in more permanent residents who care about their community. It will also bring critical pedestrian safety improvements to the incredibly dangerous intersection of Mission and Cesar Chavez. My daughters attend public school here in San Francisco. We are active, engaged members of our community. We are trying to raise our children here in the Mission. Please help us strengthen our community and save our streets by supporting this project. Please deny the appeal and support Seven Hills. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Deborah Neiman. I run the Noe Valley Community Benefit District, and I have family that live on Guerrero and 23rd. I'll make this brief. It is my understanding that the CEQA process exists to address issues relating to a project's environmental impact, but all I'm hearing about is a non-existent alternative plan by MAC and BHNC that has not gone through the proper channels for approval. Please deny this appeal, supervisors. Please put MAC's appeal to rest and support the Seven Hills Project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Vicki Rosen. I'm the president of Upper Noe Neighbors, and I live in an area that's very close to this proposed development. It seems kind of strange to be up here actually defending a development project, because usually we're against most of the developments that come our way and have been in our neighborhood as either being too big, too out of character, or too much for the very, very rich. And we don't feel that this project falls under that category. It came up to a vote with our members, they were totally in support of it. We feel it's a really good mix for that corridor, for that corner, and it's going to supply some much-needed housing for a variety of types of people. As far as environmental impacts, which is really the reason why we're here discussing this, we do not feel that there are going to be--